Your microphone's on. Make sure the green light's looking at you.
I like the red light.
I do, too. Okay. We're not even gonna hit the gavel on this due to it's workshop. It'd be in a workshop, so, uh, uh, at this point, Dr. Jensen, we'll, uh, have you come up and share with us. We've had, we've had several requests and questions about the ARPA money. We see quite a few things in this, in this budget opening about the ARPA money.
Yeah.
Like to get an entire rundown on it, please.
Yeah. Um, however, my understanding of right now is discussing kind of where we were with ARPA rather than this, rather than the budget amendment and so.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but numbers ninety-four all the way to one oh five are all ARPA funds that's in the, that's in the budget amendment.
Yeah, and so, um, I would, here we go. Um, so I can answer some questions on that. Um, the, the first thing to address in here, though, on our ARPA projects was, we had talked about this in our budget committee meeting, so any of you that are members of the committee would, uh, be familiar a little bit with what, um, I've prepared to speak about today in our workshop. Uh, but what we've got here is, is a project summary, and that's, uh, I don't know if I can make that any bigger. That's pretty small looking up there for you. But this is, these are our projects that we've awarded out already. It went through a process last year, um, about the same time years when we started, but these are projects that department heads, uh, were requested to submit, uh, and came back to budget committee and were recommended to council, and these are ones that council has approved. And you can see there's, there's various types. So we have a stormwater improvement project for out here, um, on this campus, but we had some IT, uh, projects. Our biggest single award probably right here, uh, there are storm sewer water, uh, and covert projects for public works, twenty, twenty different sites. Uh, that one totaled five million dollars, that award, uh, by itself. And, and others, emergency assistance with victim advocates and, and, uh, this, this document can be available, too. But the idea here is that we, we've got several, a large number of awards out there actually, but what I'd wanted to highlight and what we talked about in our budget committee really has to do with this bottom schedule here, and it reviewed what do we have left. And so you can see here that we have allocated from the treasury a total of twenty-four point nine million. That came in two tranches, they call it, so half of that in twenty twenty-one and half of it last year in twenty twenty-two. Uh, ten million dollars of that was, uh, referenced as a standard allowance, which meant barring the most basic, uh, exceptions, it could be spent on anything. So one exception would be they didn't want us to spend it on anything prior, past, originated prior, so like debt service or those, uh, any, anything that was from, from a long time ago. Uh, they didn't want to that, us to spend that on that, but we could spend it on any government service. Uh, so what, and it could supplant what was already in your budget. So what we did is, uh, in twenty twenty-two, we have reported that that ten million was spent on public safety, um, expenses, and then that freed up ten million dollars of county funds, which are sitting in the general fund, fund balance. So we have a large amount of funding available, but it is not the ARPA funding anymore at this point. We've, we would say we've reported that as spent on public safety. Um, what that left for us then was fourteen point nine million dollars right here that does need to meet eligibility criteria. And so, uh, in those awards that we saw above, we have nine point six million that are, have been awarded out already that have met eligibility criteria.
That was on, on the former list that you've shown us.
Yeah, yeah, on these projects up here that we were looking at. So then what we have left is this five million two ninety-nine. Um, these are funds that have not been awarded. They had, they haven't had any proposals against them. They just, it's just remaining funds from what the US Treasury allocated to the cash county. So when we talked about that in the budget committee, we wanted to, uh, look at going through another round of, uh, of, uh, requests, basically receiving applications, uh, from department heads, but we wanted to do it, uh, maybe a little more formal than we did it last year. Uh, last year, we, we being the finance office, received emails, word of mouth, and we just kind of compiled a list of projects with a little bit of notes on, uh, what it was and, and how it was eligible and how it met eligibility criteria, and we, we kind of ran with it from there. This year, we want to do, uh, and, and in response to feedback, I think that we got on the process last year, but we've designed it an application form, uh, that's more similar to a RAPS tax process. And so I want to show that to you here. Um, this is what anybody requesting funds would, would get this application. And, uh, it gives a brief introduction of what, uh, the ARPA funds are. There's a.
Can I just back up one second?
Yep.
You've, you've said two things. One, you said that we've, we've gone back to the department heads.
So we've reached out, yeah.
Reached out the department heads on this remaining five point.
Three.
Three million dollars, okay? And then all right there you say any, if we, when we get a request from anyone.
So.
Who is anyone? Is that just from the department?
Right now, that's who we reached out to, yes.
Have reached out any further, because I've had several, several other entities and several other cash county.
Yeah, so we, we had.
Needs out there that are wondering what, you know, why they haven't been, uh, why they haven't been listened to.
Um, so I don't have anyone that's contacted my office, and we've talked about this, though, in, in budget committee meeting a little bit, that there potentially were other entities that would, uh, be looking for assistance as well. That, um, could be something that then we would say, okay, do we want to reserve out funding for that? And that would be an application here that we would bring back and propose to council and say, uh, X amount of dollars could be reserved for other entities. That was similar to what we did with the CARES Act. Um, if you recall back in twenty twenty, when we had CARES Act funding, um, we didn't open up the whole amount to anyone and everyone in the county, but there was a specified amount that we did, um, allow for outside entities to, to acquire or request. Um, but I haven't had that communicated back to me yet at this point.
Well, my question is if there's anybody that has a need in the county, aren't they in the department? Like, wouldn't it go through their department?
Well, now.
Or is there?
They're not necessarily, they're within the county, but they're also maybe a city.
Oh, I see, okay.
That is reaching out.
Not within a county department.
Or a, uh, I know one specific that's coming to me several times, and I've sent him here, and, uh, but they aren't, they haven't really gotten anywhere with it, and they're wondering why.
Okay, and I, I don't know. I don't, I haven't answered.
They have a water project. They have some things that are all ready to go, and, you know, they want to really get going, but they're.
Do they, how much, do they, have they disclosed an amount or like, cause each of the cities got an appropriation also from the treasury directly? Um, and then the county also got one directly, so we would have to, in, in a case like that, if they had a project they wanted to work on and were seeking county funds, what would happen is, uh, we would be looking for them probably to use their funding up first, and then on county side, um, it becomes a sub-recipient award. So the county still has to manage all of that and has to report it back, but then we would have to, uh, work in cooperation with any city to, to do that. But if it, uh, was a water project, and maybe this is what you're alluding to, would that then, they need to contact Public Works and see if Public Works was willing to work through that or contact, uh, that's a process that hasn't been developed out yet.
We did use some of it. We, I thought we were gonna be using some of it, but it was being dovetailed into drainage districts and stuff, right?
So that was from CARES Act, and I think those pieces we, we did do, um, already, but I don't, I haven't had anything from ARPA that we've done that with.
Mr. Chair, I could maybe add a little bit more information. In our budget committee, we did have discussion about county departments and, uh, and the process we could go through of requesting that they fill out applications if they had any other requests. We also did discuss nonprofits, because that is something that has been discussed a few times at, at council and with others. And that's something that was done with the CARES Act funding, that the county distributed some of the CARES Act funding to nonprofits. Uh, and we also did at the budget committee meeting discuss, uh, the, the specific one that you're referring to, I believe, as well as, as a possibility that we might consider. Uh, if I remember correctly, and those on the budget committee, uh, to chime in as well, uh, I believe that what the budget committee decided was that we wanted to look one more time at potential internal needs before, uh, we proposed opening up the requests to, uh, the, the general public or nonprofits or other organizations. Uh, but it was discussed in the budget committee meeting whether or not we should allow cities to apply for this money, whether or not we should allow nonprofits to apply for that money. And, uh, I, I think it, those are both things that we should consider at some point, uh, after, after we make sure all of our internal needs are taken care of, and I think that's what the consensus of the budget committee was. Uh, however, that's, uh, at the discretion of the council. If the council has a different idea and you want to make some of this money available now for nonprofits or other cities to apply, uh, my, my recommendation would just be that if we were to do that, that we make sure there's an open and, uh, fair process where everyone in need could have an equal shot at applying for the funds and that we would have some type of an objective process to review those applications and determine what the greatest need might be in comparison to potential internal county needs.
I just remember when it was first sent out that some of the priorities were to improve water infrastructure and, uh, you know, and I guess, you know, shovel-ready projects that are ready to go with things like that. And, and I've been worried and seeing some of these requests here that not a, very few of those have anything to do with what the, the big portion of that ask that came out from the, that money, and so I'm a little bit worried on that.
Okay. I, I was the one that mentioned the municipalities in the budget meeting, and my point was, is we look at the criticality of these things. I mean, we talk about ranking and everything else. I understand filling the needs within the county, but my point was, is if we've got a city or some places that are critical need either on sewer or water or other things that the county's gonna be facing anyhow, that we ought to be addressing this during the ARPA thing from a ranking standpoint.
Right, and, um, you know, others that were in the budget committee maybe could weigh in on that, but I agree, we did talk about that, but I haven't had any feedback on what that process would be or to further that, and certainly no one from outside the county has contacted me to, to further that.
The other thing that we discussed in that meeting was the potential risk to the county, uh, because, uh, ultimately the county will be responsible for how these funds are expended. And, uh, even if we were to, uh, to share some of these funds with a city or a nonprofit, we ultimately will be the ones responsible for reporting and justifying the expenditure, and if, uh, if the Department of Treasury determines that, uh, something, some inappropriate expenditure happened, we're ultimately on the hook for that. Whoever we would share the money with would be a sub-recipient of ours. Uh, it's, it's a little more strict than it was in the CARES Act process, so that was something the, the committee discussed as well. If we did decide at some point to go down that road, that we'd want to make sure we had appropriate measures in place to ensure that we were protected if somebody doesn't spend the money appropriately.
So, yeah, okay. So, so in this application, then, there, the introduction here discusses what the ARPA funding is, and it's specifically coronavirus state and local recovery funds. Three hundred fifty billion dollars were allocated to state, and that's where we get our twenty-five million from our twenty-four point nine million. Um, it kind of compares it to CARES Act a little bit, but highlights that there are special requirements that the CARES Act didn't have. Uh, and Alma Burgess in my office, uh, took a lot of, uh, input on, on what this application should look like, and he's put a lot of this together, uh, and I worked with him on it some, but, uh, I appreciate his work on that. And, and what we have here is embedded into this application are some resources that I think will help entities that are applying for. So if we open that up to other entities, or whether we're just talking about our own departments, um, these, these documents here are, are quite helpful on what can, uh, be spent and, and trying to determine what those eligibility rules are. Um, so, for example, in this, uh, frequently asked questions document, it'll just, the application will link right to it. It, it gives, let's see, it gives really good examples of some projects and is answering some questions. So here's one I, I would want to maybe highlight right here. Um, eligibility isn't as straightforward as saying it is or it isn't. We, there's, there's a lot of criteria that we want to consider on a project. Um, there is no exhaustive list, and that's what this, uh, question answers here. It says, if a use of funds is not explicitly permitted in the final rule, um, as a response to the public health emergency and its negative economic impact, does that mean it is prohibited? The answer to that is no. Um, the final rule provides a non-exhaustive list of enumerated uses. And so what, what this is really getting at is we're trying to identify issues and, and ways that that serves the population or way that that enhances, uh, the way government services are provided, uh, so that if we had another pandemic, that, uh, we would be better suited to, to continue working and be able to work through that. Or that it, it mitigates, you know, something that went really wrong during this one, what, what can be done so that that wouldn't happen again, you know? There's, it's, it's broad in a sense, but we have to tie it back to, uh, pandemic a little bit. But there's a whole, uh, host of questions here that, uh, department heads or others would, uh, potentially want, oops, I closed the whole thing there. Another one is, uh, this overview of the final rule. Uh, the final rule is about, again, eligibility and, and what types of projects and how they would, uh, be eligible. So for example, um, you can see these different categories here responding to public health and economic impacts. The treasury has subdivided that into, uh, smaller buckets that help us, uh, understand some things. Assistance to households is one of those. Assistance in nonprofits is, is another category. That assistance isn't just, uh, any general assistance. It would be something that, again, ties back to the pandemic or would help us, uh, operate or help them operate better in, in a future pandemic, kind of an idea. Uh, for, for us here at the county, public sector capacity becomes one of those, uh, subcategories that we would look at a lot, and then we have an effective service delivery. So one of them, um, we have about a, a few applications already, actually. Uh, we'll talk about due dates in a little bit, but we know that, um, addressing administrative needs, uh, here's a couple of examples. Again, not an, an exhaustive list, but some examples here that talks about, uh, technology infrastructure adapted to government operations to the pandemic. So video conferencing software, data or case management systems that would help us improve operations. Those are being used as examples here that tell us, yeah, that, those are eligible expenses. So we'll see, we'll see some, uh, requests along those lines. And it's not giving me my Mac or on that again. Here we go. Uh, in fact, let me jump to it from here instead. Not, sorry, wrong button. That's what I want here. Um, so after it gives those resources, it highlights some dates here, and earlier on, maybe not as much now, it was, it was, we needed to be careful about, uh, what expenses we submitted. So these do have to be expenses that are incurred after March, uh, third of twenty twenty-one. And, and these days, that's a pretty easy requirement to meet. Initially on, there, there was a lot of question about that, but that's still something we want to be clear about, is we can't look backwards and try to look for reimbursement on some of our old expenses. The other two dates that are, are important are December thirty-first of twenty-four and December thirty-first of twenty-six. And, and you can see here, by December thirty-first of twenty-four, funds must be obligated. And, and we wanted to clarify the difference between, uh, what we have here and funding that has been awarded out. We, we've made these awards of nine point six million, but most of that actually is not obligated funds at this point. An obligation is when we become bound to pay it to a third party. So if we say, hey, five million dollars for those, uh, water or storm sewer projects from Public Works, that's not an obligation yet. We, we've made that statement, or council has made that statement, of saying this is how it'll be paid. But until there's a contract in place to build those or complete those projects or until we've acquired some type of service now that we have to pay for, those funds aren't obligated. So the obligation is either, like I said, by contract or by services already received. Um, those have to be in place by December of next year, December thirty-first of next year. The expense by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, um, no longer will accept contracts for the future. It has to be something that, a service that you have received or already paid for. So I could still theoretically receive it on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six and then pay for it on January of twenty-seven, but I have to have received those services. All services have to be completed and done by December thirty-first of twenty-six. But that's only applicable if they were already obligated by December of twenty-four. If there's no obligation at December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, we have to report that to the treasury and send those funds back. So, um, we are, you know, within two years already of, of meeting, or of coming up to that deadline. Um, so we wanted to highlight that on the application, that these need to be projects that can be done in those timeframes. The eligible uses are discussed here a little bit. Um, so responding to public health is kind of where we saw those examples and public sector capacity. Uh, premium pay, as you recall, that was one thing that was done in the initial year, um, for employees, and then water and sewer infrastructure, uh, is what, uh, Council Chair Erickson was bringing up here, um, about one of the major categories for this funding, is, is that, that is in fact correct about the water and sewer infrastructure projects. Uh, it gives a little description on those. Uh, then the instructions for submitting the application. And what we talked about in the budget committee is having a due date of April twenty-eighth. That would give, uh, several weeks for departments to put together, uh, an idea and get some idea of what the cost would be and get some, uh, uh, maybe early quotes on, on, on some of these projects, but definitely put some details together, um, so that we could gather and have a meaningful application of funds. And then that would provide that month of May for a review in the budget committee to make recommendations to the council on how those would be funded, where we would have, uh, our next budget amendment in June, so all of that could take place before then. And again, Alma Burgess in my office, who is our grant writer and, and grant manager for the county, is, is who those applications will be received by and, and compiled by. Um, then on to the actual application, uh, we have a quick name of the department when it was submitted and a synopsis in this area about what their proposal is. Gives it a title, a brief description about it, how much money they're asking for, when do they think they can start, and in their project. Uh, section three is, gives them space to provide the detail behind why they think this project has merit, why this project should be accomplished. Section four is about the budget for the project. We, above had maybe a total. Right here, we want to see a breakdown of, you know, why did this project come to a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or whatever it is, you know? It gives us that detail and, and, uh, timing of, of the expenditures. Uh, project five talks about reporting, both in sense of maybe how would they report it internally, uh, to the county? How would they report it to the community? But also in part B here, how are we gonna comply with reporting back to the US Treasury? Um, section six then is just a miscellaneous section for them to talk about either critical nature or, um, you know, discuss whether they think the county would, uh, end up having to do this project anyway. Um, those are types of discussions where they can add additional information to, to their application. And then this last section really just being something, uh, uh, we still say finance department here, this is supposed to say budget committee, though, where we can say, hey, this has been reviewed. Is it being recommended to, uh, the council? Has the council reviewed it? It's just a way for us to continue tracking, uh, whether a project was, uh, ultimately accepted and awarded out or whether, um, it was rejected, so, um, any questions on the application or the application process?
So as of right now, Cameron, are there any applications that we need to review?
Um, I don't have them ready for review, but we do, I got an email here just a little bit ago about, uh, how many have started coming in already.
I think attorneys, I believe you had one all ready.
If it's on the.
Yes.
Budget opening today.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, I saw that, but you were able to get it?
So, so counting the attorneys, there are nine applications that have been submitted at this point. And, uh, I have a list here also of.
That's all internal?
Yes, yes. Those, those are internal from department heads.
Totalling six point eight million, right?
Except, I apologize. There is one that, um, the Cash Valley Veteran Resource Center has been, uh, reached out to Alma Burgess and, and has an application in place, so there is one that is external.
Okay.
How did the external know to put an app in?
Resource Center.
I don't know. That's not been advertised on our website or anywhere, so it would have been word of mouth, is all I can assume.
Cause if we accept one from external, then we better be fair on the other external.
Yeah, so part, part of why I brought this to the budget committee was with that sentiment in place. I don't have a process for how to reach out or what amount of our five point three million is left. Do we want to reserve? Or do we want all external entities to compete against departments, or, or how does that want to go? I was looking for direction on that issue. I was looking for direction on that issue.
Makes me wonder how they need to apply if they're external though.
Some of them have heard about ARPA funding. We had CARESAC funding prior, and so I think some have reached out that way. Some have imperative need, and so they're just looking for any source of money they can, but we haven't advertised.
Did you say that was the veterans that applied for that?
Yeah, it's, I'll read it off my email again here. It's Cache Valley Veteran Resource Center.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, you bet.
Here's my first question. Of those 14 million that have been obligated, I think that was the number?
No, so 9.6 million have been awarded. Most of it has not been obligated at this point.
Okay, it's been awarded but not obligated?
Yeah.
Are any of those projects in, are they all going to be able to theoretically move forward and be obligated by December 2024, or are there some that are in jeopardy?
Yeah. So right now, to my knowledge, we expect most of that to be done inside of this year, so even before 2024. But until it's done, you know, we don't know for sure. But we do expect those to be completed, and so what the process right now was really focusing on was on that 5.3 million. Having said that, if some department finishes a project and has excess funding, we would want to be able to add that back into funds that we could do a future award with.
And then I had a question, the 5 million, the 5.3 million then that we're going to start taking applications for, they have, there's obviously government restrictions on that. But we have the 10 million that's put into our, back into our general fund that is not restricted. So are we, I don't know if, has been discussed, but like, if you got an application for something like, yeah, we really think this is a good project, but it doesn't meet those government restrictions, could we dip into that 10 million? And do we want to do that piecemeal? Or have we talked about, is there a capital project that's the whole 10 million that'll really, you know what I mean? There's just so many questions, but it seems like timing is pretty tight.
Yeah. So on the 10 million, there is no longer time restriction. So again, we've reported that the standard allowance has been spent. It's been spent on public safety.
Yeah.
So the Treasury receives that report and says, oh, they spent 10 million on public safety. That freed up $10 million of county funds, and there are no restrictions on that except for our normal restrictions on anything that the county does, right? So, so those funds, we aren't necessarily looking for an application for because if you want to earn interest on it, we can sit and earn interest on it. If we want to do a capital project, we can do a capital project on it, but that would be essentially, basically, a normal budgetary issue of how you would want to spend fund balance.
Okay. I just hate for it to kind of fritter here and there when we could have done something.
It's in, what he's saying, I think, is it's in fund balance, it's no longer under the ARPA restrictions.
No longer connected, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Mr. Chair, this is a workshop, so we're not going to be doing any action on this, but is Cameron asking for direction on how to filter through those applications? I don't know if I'm-
So the current question as far as, you know, further direction, these applications are being sent out now as, you know, as departments, we had discussed in a department head meeting, we've had departments reach out to us already. If the council wants to have a set aside amount of funds for other entities, whether cities or nonprofits or whatnot, I don't have any direction on that, and that would be something that council would need to discuss and say what their thoughts are on that. And have something that then we could say, okay, we'll reserve that amount out. But as far as any of the applications coming in right now, anything that met eligibility criteria would be discussed with the Budget Committee and presented to council by recommendation.
So we have less than two years to get these obligated.
Yes.
And so, and then two years to have them completed.
Yeah.
And with today's world, you're going to need all four years. So we need to, we need to move on some of these things.
Yeah.
This is kind of like, this workshop is kind of like the second step in the sense that we talked about it and that there's some questions about opening it up external to the county or whatever. So this is the second step in coming up with those parameters. Because we can't take action on, but we can bat it around and go, you know, what do we want to do? Where do we want to start that discussion? And then Budget Committee can have some guidance. Am I misstating that?
Yeah, everything else really is in place. If there is a desire there to open up and extend that, the Budget Committee had some opposing views there, but kind of my understanding there landed on the side right now, let's see what county needs are before we extended it out to other entities. But if the council as a whole discusses that and feels more in favor of saying, well, we understand county has needs, but we want to reserve a certain amount for other entities, then that's a discussion council needs to have and communicate back to Budget Committee so that we know how to make recommendations as we get these applications and whether we need to send applications, put it on the website and make a broader invitation. So at this point, that hasn't happened yet.
Cameron, from what I understand, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, all the municipalities did receive some ARPA funds already?
Yes, yes.
And so they're asking for additional to what they already received, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It was per capita, so Logan City, inside of Cache County, Logan City got more than any other municipality.
But every municipality?
But every municipality did receive ARPA funding.
Okay. Do we know how much they received?
I do have a list, again, that came on an email, so I don't have it ready here.
I think that goes back to Nolan's point of the merit base or the, how critical a project is. But the first pass is, are there needs within the county that we should spend it on first?
Yeah.
So if you want, if you have questions, I can, I can get specific on cities later.
Okay, great.
And that one, that one section that I was talking about, you know, on water infrastructure, so we're instructing, I don't see in the county that we would ever need that.
So we may not-
Of emphasis. Because it's kind of been our policy, we've really encouraged all that to occur where?
So-
Within, you know, within the incorporated areas.
So that would be drinking water, right? But like I said, we have a $5 million award right now to Public Works for storm water, and so that was part of that well, and that's been a big piece of what we've worked on.
That would be, and that would be huge.
And with that question, it says water, so that could be secondary water, irrigation?
It could be. Generally, if you look at eligibility with the water, is it has to meet criteria through the EPA, either the Clean Water Revolving Fund specifications, if I'm remembering those names right, or the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. There were two different pools of funding that the EPA uses on water, and they would have to meet those criteria.
No, I know, it's your, it's all yours now. Question.
Yeah.
You say you've got some apps. We know how many apps, but do you have a tally of what the requests are for?
No.
He's doing math.
There's a million two-ish?
Is that the recorder who presented to us as part of those apps?
Yeah, I believe he was on here. I went, yes.
Okay. So a million two, you say?
So it includes the eligible amount of 103,000. He had a larger request against, so, but that other, the other piece of that wouldn't go against this 5.3 million, so that's why right here we've written down 103,000. I'm aware or I hear that there's going to be more requests for trails, but I don't have an application for them yet.
So are we saying that each department has a one shot? Or is there going to be multiple?
Possibly, but, you know, if we get, it's kind of like rap stacks, I, you know, done that for a long time. We've had years where you kind of get to the end of going through all the applications and you think, gosh, you know, there's still a few hundred thousand left, what should we do with it? But more recently, you get to the end of your money and you still have millions of dollars of requests left. So it'll just kind of depend on what we have submitted to us, and I don't know what that is yet. If we get these submissions in and we still have 2 million, then we'll try to reach out and do another round of this. But if we get $12 million in applications that are eligible, then this may be it.
So we really need to get a, kind of a deadline date, at least on the next round, right?
Yeah, so this application specifies April 28th is when they're due.
Okay.
And with this-
Yeah. And that'll help us start measuring it, and the Budget Committee will start reviewing those to make recommendations to the full council.
Any other questions on that?
Just, do you need this body to authorize that form? Or is that the Budget Committee or just, who's setting it, okay, this is our application?
As far as reaching out to departments, I don't know that we would need further authorization for that. If we already wanted to reach out to other entities, we probably would like-
That's just, that's, yeah.
That's an executive.
Function, so.
Yeah.
So I have a question. We have talked about what the direction would be from the council as far as if we just want to do it internal. I feel like, without having heard what applications are coming through internally, I don't know if I can make a really, you know, a well-educated decision as far as saying, well, okay, I think maybe 4 million would be really good for to satisfy a lot of these needs, and we open up a million for outside of the departments in the county. So I feel like that's really hard to make, for me right now, to make that call without seeing the applications that are coming in.
So I mean, I could circulate what's been applied for so far, but like I said, I do hear there are more coming for sure. So to say, here's a number to make that decision off, you're still kind of in the same boat, even if I give it to you today.
Do we feel like we need to make that determination on whether we open it up externally before this April 28 deadline and then the May Budget Committee review? Is there any concern if we don't do it sooner than that?
Well, it doesn't make sense, I don't think, to peg a numbers to what we're going to open it up to until we see what comes through internally.
Let's go through this round and see where that, that comes together and kind of sees a pattern or something, maybe we sees what we may need in the future, and then we can maybe after that get a good, and we will see all the applications.
Okay.
If, you know, they will, after the Budget Committee vets and everything, we'll see all those.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send us all the copies out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Michael, I'll-
We'll turn it over, I guess, the spokesperson for the Executives Housing Crisis Task Force.
While Karina is getting the laptop that Dr. Damon will use here for the majority of the presentation, Sean Milne, Bear River Association of Governments, Economic Development, and I'm just going to give a precursor to the genesis of the Housing Crisis Task Force and the objectives, and then Dr. Khan will take over from there. First of all, thank you, council. We really appreciate the opportunity to come to you this evening and to review this body of work. I'm joined this evening by, as already noted, Dr. Damon Khan, Karina Brown, and John Drew. The three of us, John, Karina, myself, were co-chairs of this Housing Crisis Task Force this last year. So the genesis, this basically began at about this time last year. There's a well-known business within the county that was recruited and brought here to the middle of the valley a little more than five years ago. They existed in another state, they were a startup, they've been quite successful since they've been here. And the CEO had specifically reached out to Executive Zook, asked that I join as well as former Director of Development Services, Chris Harold, and asked that the three of us come to them and hear about their concerns. We, meaning the three of us, were previously aware, as you probably may be, that this particular company had successfully gotten a contract that means that they will likely bring 3,100 jobs, roughly speaking, in the next nine years to our valley. So 3,100 jobs, that's, that's pretty significant. That's the kind of thing that we usually are quite happy about with economic development. But the CEO and his C-suite team, that the reason that they had asked us to meet with them is they said quite candidly, you know, this is great news for us, we won't necessarily need that kind of growth and that housing next year, but we will, over time, ramp up that quantity of jobs, and we just don't see the housing for them, particularly at the median wage that we're able to pay our engineers, because that's the bulk of the kind of employees among that 3,000 plus that they're looking to bring on. Well, as if that wasn't kind of heavy and burdensome for us to be weighing the three of us that had met with them, they wanted us to just hear them out, and that's what we did. We were letting them know that, you know, the state of the situation of the housing market at that time, but within literally a week, several folks and community leaders were invited to Malouf, and I say this one by name because it was well-reported by Deseret News, and it involved a panel that was Mayor Danes, you had President Cocket from USU, who was part of this panel, and Chris Wilson, Senator Wilson, who was also part of this four-person panel at the front of the room, and it was moderated, and there was maybe 50 or 70 people in the room at the time. And like I say, Deseret News was there and reported on this, and one of those things was about growth. And the nature of the article that came out was, you know, Cache County doesn't believe that you have to inherently lose your quality of life as growth happens. But the nature of that panel discussion was President Cocket saying, as Sam Malouf had, who was the fourth person on that panel, that they were too challenged with housing and the right kind of housing, and not just necessarily housing for low-income or those first-time homebuyers or those at the entry level of the strata, if you think about it in terms of, you know, the different stages many folks will go through throughout their adulthood in different housing situations. And President Cocket was pretty poignant in the way that she had described hiring folks, extending full offers to these tenured professors, only for a couple of them to actually go from accepting and saying, you know, I'm committed, I'm going to come to USU, I'm going to teach, thank you for this opportunity, and in two to three weeks then saying, regrettably after looking, we just can't afford it. And even with these, you know, again, kind of salaried positions, they were saying that the housing inventory was missing. So that was the genesis, that within about a month's time, we had multiple reasons that area employers of a bunch of different perspectives saying, Cache Valley is a wonderful place, we are successful at what we do, we are successful in such a way that we're growing, but in order to have growth, not only is water and transportation and all these other things that we typically think of from our municipal and county perspective important, but this typically thought of as free-market enterprise, housing's kind of missing, and what say you county leaders, you know, what might you be able to do to help us with that? So at this time, I'll turn this over to Dr. Khan, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. This is a perfect intro and segue. I was invited to serve on the task force by John Drew as one of our co-chairs. Mayor Drew and I served together as mayors simultaneously, and one of the things that struck me right as the first conversation he and I had was not only did I, did I learn about the issues these employers were having, but also thinking of it from a municipal perspective. And if USU is trying to hire professors, I have to be nice to USU, they hired me, and, you know, engineering firms are trying to hire engineers, what happens when the city is trying to hire a firefighter who can then find housing in this valley? What happens when our school districts are hiring teachers and trying to have them find housing in this valley? From my background in service in local government, it rung true for me, and we were seeing many of our employees in the city face the same kinds of struggles as well. So I was thrilled to have the opportunity to participate and humbled to have the opportunity to be with this group today. I've worked with many of you in my municipal service, and I'm a little especially nervous because Sandy, Councilwoman Goodlander was one of my former students, and now today she's going to grade my performance in this presentation. And so it's kind of, that's especially nerve-wracking for me. So you heard about our co-chairs. We had a very broad and diverse group working together, over 50 members on our committee. We had people with planning backgrounds, people who worked in economic development. We had folks who were real estate agents. We had people in from both commercial and residential development coming in as part of the group. We had elected and appointed officials from the state as well as from the county. Councilwoman Goodlander served, and one of the recently, Gordon Zillis from the County Council also served on that group. So we had representation from this body or someone who we knew would- So we, we had a representation from, from this body or someone who we knew would very soon be serving on it. A councilwoman-elect, I guess would be the right, right term to use there. Uh, we had representatives from several religious organizations, private industry, nonprofits, CMPO, Bragg, a wide range of folks together. And yes, of course, a couple of academics, sorry about that. Uh, you can review the names of the folks who participated here in your packet. We appreciate the time commitment that each of these individuals gave. Uh, there's no compensation. They agreed to participate simply because it's an issue that they cared about and they were willing to bring their expertise to bear and strive to serve. Uh, a lovely quote and thought along those lines from Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Uh, and that's the spirit in which I, I think our, our coalition approached this. We, uh, I, I don't think any of us expected that we would come out of it and say, oh, we know exactly what to do and in three months we'll have solved the Cache County housing crisis. Uh, and, and, you know, in, in early discussions, we very quickly realized that that was going to be, that, that was going to be, uh, this, this is a very complex, multifaceted issue. And there was not going to be a single silver bullet. But at the same time, if different levels of government are willing to contribute and make even some modest, small efforts, that there are improvements that we could realize, we think, for the valley. Uh, so the task force's responsibility, we were charged by Executive Zook to take sixty days to identify causes of the crisis, quantify the magnitude of the problem, assess public attitudes, and then make a set of recommendations. And we will share some of the data and information that we learned in pursuing that, uh, over, over the course of our term of service. Uh, this is just a, a summary. Uh, there's a more detailed and I think the complete report is in your packet as well as the slides that, that we're looking at here together today. So, uh, we're, um, we, we've tried to focus on a, on a smaller number of things that we think have the biggest chance of impact. Generally speaking, first of all, you guys deserve a lot of kudos. Cache Valley is an amazing place to live. Uh, we have great communities. Uh, it's a vibrant, successful place. Number one metropolitan statistical, uh, area in the country. That's pretty impressive. Uh, and, and while there's no doubt a, a variety of reasons for that, I think good governance from our county leadership is an important part of that reason. We ranked, however, one hundred and seventy-eighth among MSAs for housing affordability, suggesting that we have an issue. Home prices, uh, you, you guys are no stranger to this. Home prices have reached historic highs in Cache Valley and the supply of available housing in Cache Valley has declined, even while our population has continued to grow. You know, there's a part of me that's a little sad about how broadly people are recognizing what a great, great place to live this is, because that puts some additional pressures on what's happening. However, while the, the narrative is often the secret's out, people all want to come to Cache Valley. Uh, the, the Gardner Institute down at the University of Utah has a team of very talented demographers. Their estimates that are, that in the period of, I think it was twenty twenty, uh, uh, excuse me, in the twenty-ten to twenty twenty time period, that approximately eighty-five percent of the growth here was organic. Births that outnumbered the number of deaths. Uh, and so a lot of the growth that we're experiencing in Cache Valley is actually because of, it's us. It's organic. It's our own children. Uh, and only fifteen percent being the net in migration. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, we, we often like to talk about those darn people moving in from out of state. Uh, and, um, this being Utah, we say darn. But, uh, the reality is, is it's the fact that we like having kids, that we're a family-centric environment. And that drives much more of the growth here than, than the in-migration. Not that in-migration is trivial, but it is significant. Okay? Uh, so during that same twenty-ten to twenty-twenty time period, housing prices accelerated very rapidly. We had a little bit of relief from that in the first year of the COVID pandemic, but it came back with a vengeance as the, the pandemic, as, as started to subside and we just got better at living, uh, in, in a COVID world. So KEMC Gardner Institute estimates a need for eleven thousand six hundred additional housing units between now and twenty thirty to accommodate the pace of growth that we have. We can either kind of haphazardly work along and hope that lack of housing is addressed or, or, or we can try to plan for it. And I think outcomes are much more likely. The, the committee, more importantly than, than my own self, feels like outcomes are much likely to be much better for the county if we plan for it, rather than just try to let it happen and see what comes along. Okay? Why is there so much demand for housing? Uh, the committee, uh, created a subcommittee that went out to study this issue. Uh, the number one thing is that Utah has the highest birth rate of any state in the United States at a rate of fourteen point nine births per thousand population. Uh, we just, we like kids. We like families. That's our culture. It's part of what makes Cache Valley a great place to be. And we need to be prepared to have places for them to live as they grow. As a parent of, of teenagers, I do hope that someday they move out and, and live somewhere else. So, uh, even though I do love my children. Yes, sir?
If you could, is this going to take quite a bit more than ten minutes?
Um, it should be maybe another five minutes or so. So we're, we're capable?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Uh, we talked about the out-of-state, the population growth, the, those items. Okay? Why is there a housing supply shortage? We had another subcommittee that looked at this and one of the key elements here is we don't have a free market for housing. Developers can only build housing where they're entitled to do so. Uh, councils, planning commissions, both at the city, to some extent, though a lesser extent at the county level, and at times state and federal regulations influence what we can do. We also have a risk of public clamor, people coming in and just saying, please don't build anything else. But that obviously has some problems as well. Uh, so we have an extreme shortage of homes. Let me go ahead and talk a, a little bit more on these numbers. Look at housing prices. Yes, it is, when the, the commission was doing a lot of its work, we gathered data on May twenty twenty-two. Part of me is tempted to say we're really good at our job because housing prices went down after the commission delivered its report, but not by very much. And what else happened in this time period? Interest rates go up by a lot. And so now the average monthly payment, when you factor, yeah, housing prices went down a little bit, interest rates went up considerably. The average monthly mortgage payment for a family in Cache Valley has continued to rise even since the commission drafted its report. Uh, Karina has been continuing to monitor these numbers. Yes, Councilmember Gunnel?
So I understand you're looking at the price of homes, but I would be interested if you correlated the size of the home that's been going up in the last few years to the price versus what's been going in the past?
That's a good question. So those, those are median housing prices. And so I, I, I guess if you were thinking that maybe we were building more way bigger homes in Cache Valley than, than we used to be, um, there was certainly a trend that direction in the nineties and early two thousands. If anything, um, in the last decade, you have seen more smaller homes, smaller lot sizes and some more, some more multifamily. And those actually tend to have lower costs, which might pull that median down rather than push it up. But that's an interesting question. I'm not entirely certain what direction that would push. But my guess is it might actually, if, if you compared the same house at nineteen ninety, two thousand, twenty-ten, twenty-twenty, the problem might actually look more severe rather than less severe as we've added more housing types in Cache Valley.
Thank you.
The number of MLS listings. Uh, in April of twenty eleven, we had nearly eight hundred homes on the MLS in Cache Valley. Some people said the reason it was low in, in twenty twenty-one is the pandemic. You can see post-pandemic, those things are coming up. But even now, well, well outside the COVID influence there, uh, the number of homes available on the market is tiny. I was, spoke to a group of Realtors a, a couple of years ago as mayor. There's about two hundred Realtors in Cache Valley. There's only a hundred homes listed on the MLS right now. For a Realtor to have one listing on the MLS is a remarkable accomplishment that half the others don't have. That, um, you know, is telling, I think. I'm going to go ahead and skip some of these kinds of, of things so we can focus on recommendations. We offered recommendations recognizing that no single level of government can solve this problem. Uh, the federal government has some issues to do with regulation, with money supply and, and supply chain issues as well as steps to control inflation. I would rather have you guys trying to solve those problems than Congress.
Appreciate that.
And, and yet I know that, that we have to, to stay in our respective lanes. So I, I won't lecture you on what I want the federal government to do. State government, interestingly, has actually done several of these things. I, I don't know that our, uh, task force can claim credit for that, but they did make some reforms to the local referendum process, making it so that things are not referable if they were decided by a major, or excuse me, by a unanimous vote in a city or county council, which I think is helpful at decreasing some of those pressures on local elected officials. Uh, and, and some other ideas for things they could change at the state level. They also had a, a new program of several millions of dollars behind support for first-time home buyers as well. Uh, the county, not just Cache County itself, but also thinking of related organizations like the CMPO and Bragg. Uh, a few ideas that I'll spend, I'll focus a little more on. First, uh, working with Kalish Valley Cities, the task force would invite these organizations to consider, consider efforts towards a stronger county-wide master plan. The CMPO actually appropriated, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support this a little over, about a year and a half ago. Um, and, and so there's some funding there that's been provided that we didn't, uh, we're not here to ask you guys to fund, which is always nice that we don't have to ask you for money. Uh, but, uh, the county has a marvelous function as an umbrella organization and, and has the gravitas to bring cities together to participate in these plans. Uh, and, and to the extent that the county is able to do that, I, I think that has a lot of potential to help with transportation planning as, and, and managing open space as well as identifying places where we can do a little more development and get these nearly twelve thousand additional residences that we're forecast to need in the next seven years. Encourage, uh, if, if we're going to talk about adding housing, we also have to think about adding open space and preserving the things that we love about Cache Valley. And so considering open space in such a general plan is important. Considering code revisions that would allow denser development in unincorporated areas of counties so far. Identify and implement strategies to support residents dealing with homelessness and then talking about, uh, an annual report on growth issues. We have, as a task force, have also not only come to visit you, but we've been out and about visiting cities around Cache Valley. I know we've been at North Logan, we've been at Hyde Park, we've been at Nibley, we've been at Providence. I think we've been at Smithfield. Did we make it to, um, Hiram? I think we got to Hiram as well. So we've been taking the show on the road, not just asking the county if you can solve our problems, but telling everyone that, that will let us come in and visit with them that we have some ideas that we hope that they will listen to. Cities are especially important because they're the ones that are primarily entitling housing in the regulatory regime. I'm going to skip our calls to these others and just our top three recommendations. Zoning referendum at the county and city levels. Uh, and, and the, the state has already made some strides towards reforming, uh, the, the threat of referendum. Public education campaigns, which we're very excited. I, I just learned that, uh, that Karina has been out applying for grants. And I think it was thirty thousand dollars of grant money that, that's been made available to support, um, public education campaigns on the issues facing Cache Valley in the future. We hope that you will have some ideas and feedback for ways that we might be able to take that out and be most efficacious with that. And then continued coordinated efforts between the county and cities as we plan for the growth that is inevitably coming to our valley. Much as we would love for it to stay much like it is today, the growth is coming. And whatever we can do to plan will help us to better preserve the things we love about it today for generations into the future. So I'll stop there and let's see, is question, question time or is anyone else supposed to go next?
Uh, Executives, please. I'll be quick. I know we're over time already. I just wanted to express my thanks to, first of all, Dr. Khan for your presentation tonight. Uh, second of all, to the co-chairs who are all three here tonight, John and Sean and Karina for leading the task force. And then especially the members of the task force, that fifty-plus members of our community who are willing to step up and help, including Councilman Goodlander, Councilmember Zillis. Thank you so much to all of them for serving and helping with this important issue in our community. And thank you for all of them who have been helping with the follow-through, the education, the public outreach. And I, I just want to congratulate them too, just really quickly. Uh, they, they have received some, some recognition that I think is due them. The American Planning Association actually awarded them an award of merit late last year for the project. And I, I think one that was really cool, the Speaker of the House, Brad Wilson, was up here a couple of months ago and I know a couple of you councilmembers were there. And when he was here, I wanted to give him a copy of the report. And before I could, he told me that he had already received it, that he had already read it. And in fact, during his comments, when he spoke that day, he referred to it and referred to it as the, the best such plan he had seen anywhere in the state. So I thought that was high praise for the, the task force. And I just want to add my praise to that, thank them once again for their hard work on this important issue. Thank you.
Any questions specifically? Okay. We'll, uh, actually head back in and we'll go get a little bite to eat here before we hit five o'clock. So.